Okay, good evening, folks. I'm gonna call it to order. Our strategic water supply assessment work session on January 24th. And can I get a roll call?
Director Kush?
Here.
Director Russell?
Here.
Director Sampson?
Here.
Director Smith?
Here.
President Schmidt?
Yeah. Okay, tonight, we've got our strategic water supply assessment update, and I think that hands over that to you, Ben, or is it Armin?
I'll kick off a couple of opening remarks, President Schmidt. Good evening, this is the Strategic Water Supply Assessment Update. I think this is our ninth dedicated special board meeting on this subject. And we've been at this a while. We're at the point now where it's all starting to come together. You know, until now, our work is focused on understanding potential deficit, working through a number of water supply options, and, you know, supply alternatives in general, including conservation. At our last meeting, we put all of these together in the form of portfolios and presented that approach to the board. And this evening, you'll see sort of the results of how that those portfolios, and it's very graphical and very interesting how those portfolios are turned into roadmaps that address the water supply deficit. And then we take an opportunity to sort of learn from those roadmaps, those portfolio roadmaps, in developing an integrated water supply roadmap for the district. And you'll see that towards the end of the presentation this evening, and we look forward to hopefully a lively discussion, questions, and understanding how we can support the board through this process. Tonight, we have Armin Manever and Marcelo Origino with Jacobs Engineering, and Armin will take us through the presentation this evening.
Hey, thanks, Paul. Hopefully, screen is showing well for everyone. Okay, well, thanks, everyone, thanks. Board wanted to, as Paul mentioned, we presented these draft portfolios at the last board update. So we wanted to give a brief project update, talk about the portfolios that have been sampled here and addressed, and then we'll summarize kind of what we've learned from those portfolios and work towards developing roadmap. So I think, as Paul mentioned, it's been really intriguing for our team to pull all the information together and start to really think about different strategies for resolving future resiliency challenges. So we hope this is a lively discussion and not just us presenting to you today. I think we already talked about that, so today is talking about the analysis portfolios, and then I believe there is a yet to be scheduled workshop in February where we'll talk a little bit more about roadmaps and heading towards recommendations. Just as a reminder for the folks on the board who've been at this for a while, we are at this kind of towards the tail end of our process where we're really focused on what we've articulated, the scenarios that identify kind of potential deficits in the future if those futures were to play out, varying droughts and climate change. We looked at the range of alternatives, and then we've been really working on this step for some time and putting both refining the alternatives and then putting the alternatives together into portfolios. But this is quite a comprehensive step, so we've been at this one for a little while. It shows as if it's the same as some of the others, but this is quite a quite effort that we've been putting through in the last month or so. As a reminder, we have four scenarios that we've been looking at, so kind of looking at what are the future hydroclimatic conditions in the future? What types of drought might be expected? We've created some synthetic droughts using some information from the past. We've looked at future climate information, and then we've characterized one scenario, this scenario four, which is looking at both a drought and abrupt disruptions from kind of a wildfire event in the watershed. What we found is the scenario two, which we'll talk about mostly today, oh, sorry, let me back up. These are the four scenarios I won't spend. These are the same as what we presented to you at the last meeting, but just to briefly kind of overview the scenarios, we have scenario one is kind of the rearview mirror approach to climate hydroclimatic conditions. So we look at the past, we have a long, long record of the past of climate and hydrology, and we use that to look forward into the future. Scenario two, we kind of, we call it a stress test system, so it's really, we've taken the worst two droughts of the history and kind of coupled them together. We say, well, what if they were both paired together back to back? So it's a, we don't observe it in history, and we don't observe it in the future climate projections, but I would say it's still plausible, and it's a reasonable stress test for your system. That's scenario two. Scenario three was really looking at climate projections. We've looked at 20 different projections out through the year 2100, and then looked at the kind of the worst case of some of those that are projecting kind of longer persistent sustained dry periods, but not as deep of a drought intensity that we've seen in these in scenario one or scenario two. And then finally, scenario four, we do look at kind of what happens if we have a disruptive event in the watershed. Wildfire is what we used as our as our trigger here, and we combine that with the hydrology conditions of scenario two, that four-year synthetic drought. And then we make assumptions of operational disruptions that could occur during that period of treatability of supply in a kind of a post wildfire runoff event. We're going to focus today's discussion primarily on scenario two. It's what we, it's the stress test that we've been using to test a lot of our alternatives, and it tends to be the kind of the worst, the worst or the most challenging condition. So this is one of the graphics of the way we analyze this, we don't just look at at one particular possible future. We run it in a, we run our model in our stochastic manner in that we can have that drought occur early, it could occur late. And so this this plot here showing the gray shading is showing kind of the range of outcomes in any particular year based on over 100 individual realizations. The black line, the heavy black line here represents the median or the 50th percentile condition. So kind of the, what you would expect, half of the simulations would be below that and half above. And then the green line represents one particular realization where the drought occurred in the last, the latter period of the simulation, so in the 2041 to 44 timeframe. And so you can think of the gray shading is, there are actually 100 different green lines that are, make up the gray shading, and so with the gray shading are the statistics from those results. So we have the minimum in any particular year of storage, we're looking at total Marin storage. So you have about 80,000 acre feet of total storage. We have the, under these simulations, we have the likelihood being very rare of dropping to these low conditions, but certainly in the kind of the 2% to 3% possibility. So we use this green line to kind of define the range of the deficit just to help illustrate the stochastic nature and then look at it from an individual realization. So from that particular realization, we dropped below our 30,000 storage threshold, which is we're defining as kind of our operational limits. And we also, in this particular simulation, we had shortages in which the, in the model simulation where they were not able to deliver the full capacity of full delivery, full demands in those particular years. So when we look at how much the storage fell below 30,000 and how much that potential delivery shortage was, we call that a deficit, a water supply deficit. And then we accumulate that over the drought period and then divide by the length of the drought period to get an annualized estimate of the deficit. And so that's what's shown in the upper right here in this particular simulation. It's around 8,500 acre feet per year over the four-year period. So if you had 8,500 acre feet of additional supply during that drought period, you would have been able to manage the 30,000 storage level and not have any shortages in the system. So that's how we're defining the deficit. And it's, I think it's really helpful just to think of like the order of magnitude of water management actions that would have to be built into the system to get drought resiliency for this particular scenario. Scenarios one and scenarios three, both have much smaller deficits in this particular scenario because they have droughts of only, in scenario one, there are drought lengths of really two, maybe two and a half years in length. And in scenario three, which is the climate futures, it has these long sustained droughts, but they are not as, not nearly as sharp as what we're seeing in this particular simulation. Okay, so I hope that's helpful to help set the set the table for what we're trying to address. That's kind of the shape of the problem that we've been trying to address through the water management alternatives. And so we've developed a set of portfolios, and the portfolios were intended to be kind of illustrative in terms of tackling the problem from a different strategies. So we talk about the strategy as the particular plan for delivering or resolving the water supply deficits. And then we use the portfolios as the way to implement, so it's a combination of actions. We're, in general, we didn't look at singular actions because most of the actions that we've looked at are not sufficient in and of themselves to address the deficit. So we look at combinations of actions which we call portfolios. And then we're really using these portfolios to help inform how we move forward. So there may be a balance to address short-term deficits or longer term. There may be some synergies across elements of the various portfolios, and we want to really use the portfolios to help inform the final recommendation and a final set of roadmap that you might undertake as a board. So we had four portfolios that we talked about at the last meeting.
Yes, Armin, just to clarify, because I couldn't quite see it in the presentation, but are you saying that you're looking at short, medium, and long-term goals in each of these portfolios kind of separately? Or?
Yeah, it's a good question, Director Smith. We're looking at what actions have potential to help resolve short-term deficits versus some actions that might be larger and more beneficial, but can only be implemented in a longer timeframe.
And have we set goals yet as a board and as an organization for short, medium, and long-term that you're mapping those towards?
We've not set specific, or I'm not aware of the board setting specific ones. We have some suggested ones here at the tail end of the of the presentation today, so we'd love to have a
Would you say that's the key part or key objective of this meeting or any other key ones that we want to get out of it as we think through this decision?
Yeah, I think the key for today is really looking at these portfolios and helping us helping guide the team and how we might think about piecing together integrated roadmaps. So I think that's number one. And then the, we have put together targets that we think are very achievable and also address the deficiencies long-term. So if there's discussion around that, and we can have some some direction from the board or some question and conversation, that would be great.
Yeah, thanks.
Armin, just maybe one question regarding these goals. The end result of the short-term, long, medium-term, and long-term actions, according to your model, would be to ensure that in the case of the four-year drought scenario, we don't fall below the 30,000 acre foot storage level. That's, that's the target based on the scenario of the four-year drought.
Correct, yeah, some of the goals in the very near term won't, like if the four-year drought were to occur tomorrow, there's not enough in, we're in any of these portfolios to address that immediately. There would be other actions that would have to be considered, so. But yes, that is, the target is that we build up towards resiliency to addressing that four-year drought if should it occur over the timeframe of our project development.
I know that the modeling has been presented multiple times now. As you said, I think this is the ninth meeting, and you've been, you know, bringing that forward multiple times. Is there, is there any possibility of getting maybe an addendum or separately seeing, getting a little more detail on your modeling strategy for board members that are interested?
Interested.
Yeah, I know we have some draft documentation, Paul, I don't believe that's been shared, or there's some draft documentation that both includes the assumptions and the modeling details, so.
Yeah. In, I think you're referring, Armin, in the PDF, I think, went out last week on the 17th or so. And in there, I think we're planning, I'm not sure if that version has it, Armin, to place the water balances for the scenarios, which I think will will address many of the questions around modeling.
Yeah, we can double check what went out, but I believe, Director Kush, I believe it is in there, and if we need to expand upon it, we can certainly do that.
Okay, I'll go back and check the document that Paul shared on the 17th. I do have that, Paul.
Okay, it should be in, the details are, more details are in the appendix B, B as in boy.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'll keep moving on the portfolios then, so the the model is really helping us address kind of the size of the problem, and we're looking at these portfolios, different ways to tackle that problem. So we've got four here, the portfolio A, which is really trying to build off existing infrastructure. So a lot of it is emphasizing maximizing the existing local and regional supplies, operating a little bit more aggressively to take Sonoma water when available, adding some additional conveyance to take kind of the surplus water that might be available and and store that in your local reservoirs. And it also has a component of augmenting local surface storage. Portfolio B is really looking at new local supplies, so it kind of emphasizes the alternatives that add new local kind of drought resilient supplies, so reuse and desalination, supplies that are believed to be available during virtually all periods of time. Portfolio C is looking to diversify imports, so you currently have your local watersheds. You've got the Russian River and water that comes through Sonoma water. This portfolio is looking to diversify imports with augmenting additional inter ties with East Bay mud for Sacramento Valley water purchases to be transferred into the district. And then finally, portfolio D is not necessarily a strategy, it could be a strategy, but the way we've developed it is essentially not being overly strategic, but just looking at what would happen if we were to implement all of the low-cost, low-cost per acre foot actions that we've identified. So it ends up, you know, pulling the conservation, it pulls the maximizing Sonoma purchases, but not not the new conveyance linkages. Looks at groundwater bank, storage augmentation, and some brackish desalination. So that was really meant to be kind of a reference portfolio, not necessarily one that would stand by itself. So as an example here, this is portfolio A. The projects are listed in the first column that are included as part of this portfolio. We've broken it into three different time periods, so we have a near-term, zero to three years, a midterm, and a four to seven years, and then a long-term, which is kind of eight plus years or eight to 12 years plus. Many of these, or some of these projects need construction time and planning time and permitting time that would not be available in the near-term, and some perhaps not in what we're calling the midterm either. So that's where the gray shading shows when those projects would not be available, just because there's other activities that would have to be implemented in order for them to start producing a true water supply, a wet water benefit. The purple shading shows then which projects were selected as part of this portfolio, and whether they were available in the near-term, midterm, or long-term. We have a couple that are shaded right now. We've got the temporary urgency change permits, which are are an action that the district may take in extreme dry conditions to petition the board for changing the required releases. We assume that they're part of the portfolio, but we've not simulated it in our in our analysis, just because the the nature of it is very dynamic, and we didn't want to presume a long-term pathway for that. And then similarly, the regulatory-driven water conservation program, we assume could be part of this portfolio, but is not simulated in this, in the modeling that we've just done. And then you'll see that there are some where we have an OR tag to it. This is meant to indicate that there's a pathway there in which you would select one or the other, but you would not implement both those projects simultaneously. So for example, I'll just take an easy example here for the reservoir enlargement possibilities. We have enlarging Sulehuli, Nikasio, or Kent. We don't think you would enlarge all three of them. It's likely you enlarge, you would select the best option and enlarge one of those reservoirs. We didn't, we don't feel like the analysis is at a point where we would be selecting at this point.
Armin, could you remind at least one of the new board members, myself, the difference between the water conservation program and the regulatory-driven program?
Yeah, the water conservation program is a an expansion of the current program that exists with incentive-based program, so it includes AMI. It has some incentives for landscape changes and fixture replacements. The regulatory-driven program was meant to be kind of a more advanced or enlarged aspect of the program, and it would include some actions that would be more regulatory-driven as opposed to being kind of fully incentive-based.
Got it. And then the options that you did not select, you know, they're mostly towards the bottom. Could you say a couple of things about what led you not to pick those?
Yeah, so well, first, yeah, just kind of walking down the list, well, first off, we don't think you need five reservoirs to be built to expand, so there was kind of a narrowing down of the list, these new reservoir types of Halak and Devil's Gulch are are new reservoirs, large construction costs, large dollar per acre foot cost, really quite exorbitant, I think would be out of the range. The next grouping are movable spillway gates. And our thinking was, well, we probably, if you're going to invest in a reservoir enlargement, then you would probably not also be investing in movable spillway gates for those same types of reservoirs. But you certainly could do some combination of them. So that's kind of the reasoning for this particular one.
Thank you.
And again, these are not, these are not meant to be kind of like final portfolios, they're illustrative portfolios of a pathway that focuses on this strategy. So, Paul, I'm happy to slow down or go faster, but I'll keep going until questions arise. But what we did in this, for each of the portfolios, we then took those actions that were included in the previous slide. We built them into the model, assuming that they were all implemented. And we ran the model with those actions in place, and we have both a baseline, so this, so these are looking again at total Marin reservoir storage, and the black line is that same line that we saw on the green line that was on the previous slide earlier, which was our kind of one of our most critical realizations from that, the baseline, the scenario two. And if you look at the table, the inset table, it gives you kind of a guide of where where that baseline was. So the baseline has a four-year drought, we have roughly three years that fell below that 30,000 acre feet threshold. It fell all the way below 10,000 acre feet. And if we combine the storage and the shortage deficit, we have about 8,500 acre feet per year of deficit. That's that number that we were talking about on the previous slide. And then we've also included kind of the number, the number of years in which the water shortage contingency plan might be triggering stage one or stage two or stage three restrictions. And in your water shortage contingency plan, stage one is roughly a 10% reduction. Stage two is 20%, and stage three is at a 30%. So we're, we're kind of using this as another metric to look at how well do the portfolios manage the the frequency at which you have to dive or dig into those restrictions.
Yeah, Armin, if I could, I just think this is a really interesting and important consideration as we look at this, that we aren't just looking at the deficit, that's certainly the driver, but the reduction in frequency of going to stage one, stage two, and three is quite significant because, right, these numbers could increase, but if we look at the percentages from six to two on stage two, and then stage three from four to one over time, that's a very significant reduction in putting our community in and out of drought. Even if we weren't in cases threatened with running out of water, it's still impactful, and it's a, I wouldn't call it an ancillary benefit, it's a significant additional benefit, right, as we move forward.
Well said.
Thank you, Ben. So if I can just summarize, then there's 23 years in this particular simulation, so we're running 20 from beginning of 2023, or we do water year of 2023 through the end of 2045. So in those 23 years of simulation, there were, so to Ben's point, there were our four years in which we triggered stage three restrictions in our in our future baseline scenario, scenario two. And then under the portfolio A, which is using this this purple line, and I'll explain the other lines in a moment. We had only one period in which we hit the stage three restrictions. We had no years that fell below the 30,000 limit, and our lowest storage was about just above 33,000. And then we've included some other lines here just to give a sense for what are the major actions that drive to the performance of this portfolio A. Kind of the first, first, if we start at the black line and we build up there, we, the first increment up that's at this orange line is is taking an operational strategy that tries to maximize Sonoma water take in years, or in, it actually does it, in this case, it does it in all years. When it becomes a more realistic action, it will be more targeted, but right now we do it in all years. So it's an operational strategy, there's no new facilities that are included in this first jump. They're just an operational strategy to take more risk and and purchase that water and put it into the system. Now, with that, there are, as you can see, there are a number of years where you didn't need the water, and that water would be, you'd be spilling some excess water, so that's an operational risk. The next uptick here in the green is where we try to remove some of the infrastructure bottlenecks, if you will. So we're trying to So we're trying to. Eliminate the bottlenecks of bringing water into Marin's in district system, so conveyance is. Uh, is improved, existing conveyance is improved, in district bottlenecks are are removed. This is a significant investment as well to for that next increment. And then the next big increment, which kind of takes us to this peach color is. Is a dedicated conveyance from from Quotati to bring water to directly to Sulu Huli, so now we're bringing water. Uh, Russian River Water directly to the reservoirs through a dedicated conveyance, and you can see that's a. A pretty big uptick in the the amount of reliability or storage benefits.
Armin, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, with that dedicated conveyance from Quatati, is that um dependent on the first two pieces as well? Um, of that scenario?
Um, it's not dependent upon the, it is dependent on the very first piece, so you would take that operational strategy, but not on the second. So you could do the bottlenecks or. You could invest in eliminating the bottlenecks or go straight to a dedicated conveyance without making that investment, so the second piece is not. Is not required to get to the the third.
Great, thanks.
Alright, sorry to talk about first, second, third, but hopefully that was clear for you, Director Samson. And then I think the the third element I want to really highlight is, obviously you can see we added. We uh included an additional storage element in this portfolio, so. You have roughly a little less than eight eighty thousand acre feet of storage right now. We um augmented your local system storage by twenty thousand acre feet. And that's why we're we're close to a hundred thousand acre feet of total storage. And I think it was really interesting in all of our simulations, we. We essentially enter the drought with not quite the full twenty thousand acre feet, but pretty close, so somewhere on the order of. Um, seventeen to seventeen to eighteen thousand acre feet of additional storage that is available to buy you. Buy you supply during extended drought period. And that's, you can see, that's why both both why you have higher storage overall, why you don't trigger your drought. Um, restrictions and why you provide a benefit during this extended period of drought. You you've basically bought yourself, you know, almost twenty thousand acre feet of of supply available for drought period. Uh, I'd say all of these portfolios are not optimized, so just as a caveat, um, we're running a lot of actions in years in which. When we got really smart and operationalized, it probably would not take those actions all the time. Uh, but I think it's illustrative in terms of the potential benefits of these portfolios. Okay, hopefully, and if we don't lose you all on this, uh, we're trying to. To to really think about how do we take each of these portfolios and and think about decision trees and and pathways that you might. Um, the board might consider as we move through this, so. Um, what we've done here and I'll, I'll take some time on this first one, we've. Kind of said, well, these are are the kind of all each of the circles on this. This um adaptation pathway roadmap are decision points or projects that could be implemented. And we start here at this current, kind of the current situation where we are today. Uh, we have on this kind of near path where there are no branches, we think these are actions that you would. Likely take regardless of what final pathway would be generated, so. There's the water shortage contingency plan and the the temporary urgency change permit actions that would be always on the table, um. We think you would maximize use of Sonoma water through operational strategy adjustments, um, kind of as a common action. Uh, we think there's value in both electrification of of Sulu Huli to allow that operation to be more flexible and the connect. Uh, the Phoenix Pontempe connection. And invest and continuing and expanding the water conservation program, we and those are all on the main line of this roadmap, if you if you will. Then, so then kind of moving forward. In time and through decisions, we think there's now pathways that you have to make decisions on in terms of, you can. Invest in resolving bottlenecks in your system, so looking at conveyance improvements within your system. Uh, you could look at. At um kind of incrementally going down a Stafford to Nikasio pipeline connection, there's an ability to get water into Lake Stafford through North Marin system currently. And developing a pipeline from Stafford to Nikasio could uh allow you to take advantage of that. And if you went down that pipeline, that pathway, which is the blue one here. Then you would perhaps be looking at increasing the conveyance into the system through a south transmission system. Which augments the Sonoma waters capability to deliver water in. And then you could be building the Castania to Stafford line, which would now be a dedicated line from the. Uh, North Marin aqueduct to to Nikasio. And then once you had the conveyance improvements there, you would obviously be looking at storage enlargement. Um, to take advantage of both that new water and local water. Uh, and then Director Samson, your question kind of of of. I think was kind of heading here, there this lowest line or pathway here is one in which you. You kind of bypass the local bottleneck investments and you focus more on this direct pipeline, this Quatati Nikasio pipeline. Um, we think all of those three pathways eventually end with some storage enlargement. To take full advantage of of both the new supply and and additional local supply. And then what we've done on the table to the right is is a kind of a scorecard for the pathway, so the way you would read this, the green one is is just these near term. Actions, you know, they produce roughly five thousand acre feet and have a. Uh, pathway cost of about sixteen hundred dollars per acre foot. Uh, just taking the the one that was simulated in the in the previous slide is this gold pathway, so it it's this green. Green pathway initially, then we pick up the gold pathway, which is looking at the Quatari Nikasio pipeline with a storage enlargement. And we have, you know, over thirteen thousand acre feet of potential new supply and and a, you know, and a higher cost than than current. But each one, each one of these pathways is is somewhat dynamic that you could, where there are branching in the pathways, for example, resolving the bottlenecks, you could. Be moving down this pathway. Um, and choose to invest only a certain amount for that, but then move on to a on to a different pathway. Uh, the regional groundwater bank is this uh green to to black pathway. Which you do all these near term actions, help develop a regional groundwater bank. And if you terminated that pathway, at that point, you. Would likely have insufficient supply for this four year drought that we're characterizing. Um, but you would have. Sufficient supply for some of the other scenarios, but then there also are continuing pathways that you could continue to invest in. So I know this takes a little bit of uh time and reading, but um I'm hope. Hoping this is uh useful and thinking through kind of the the challenges of of the pathways, but I think a take home here is. A a number of these more long term, fully developed pathways provide sufficient yield and reliability to to resolve the challenges.
Armin, you're 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 saying storage enlargement, that's Marin. Storage enlargement from, I guess, Kent or Nikasio or Sulu Huli, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, yes, we, yeah, we didn't, we didn't select one of those, but. We didn't select any of each, any one of those, but we simulated twenty thousand acre feet, I think actually in our modeling, it's Nikasio, but that was.
And are these, I I know in the summer, Director Kohler was asking about um. Whether these were comprehensive costs that you have baked in here, or whether it's. Potential for lawsuits or buying land, houses, roads, etc. Are these comprehensive or just like the the cost of building a dam and increasing the supply?
Yeah, I'd say they're they're not comprehensive in in that the detail of a specific option has been evaluated, they're. What we call kind of level three cost estimates. Um.
What does that mean, level three?
So they're, they've got a high degree of uncertainty around them.
Like ten, ten percent or thirty?
Larger than that, yeah, I think uh.
So that's hard.
Thirty, forty.
That makes these. That means seventeen hundred is within the margin of error is twenty three hundred or twenty five hundred?
Yeah, we have cost ranges in the report that we kind of provide a high and low for each one of them, uh, in this table, it's just the midpoint.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna add one more point to that, um, also for the storage ones, so we, um, some of the. Cost estimates and so for the storage in particular are comparables to other reservoir enlargements, so we've. Not done a detailed analysis of. That specific location in in your watershed and we've done comparable analysis, so that's where the, those costs are are derived from.
So Armin, just so I understand how to use this, uh, and and two questions, so s- storage enlargement, it's the volume is twenty thousand. How that's achieved is. Um, with with different storage options. Isn't really uh encompassed as a range here, because depending on which one we choose. That that cost per acre foot would go up and down. So you just you you chose Sulu Huli as the one exa- as the one example, but if we were to try to achieve that twenty thousand with some others. A smaller raise there or other raises that would substantially affect the. The cost per acre foot.
I think, correct, we we use Nikasio as for this one.
For Nikasio.
But we essentially have the same cost for for Nikasio Kent and Sulu Huli at this point in time, if if. You know, if the district chooses to move down a storage enlargement, I think there's, there needs to be further work beyond. Kind of what we've done to characterize the the cost ranges.
Yeah, cause they they'd be very different water coming from Kent than it would be from way out north and west, right? So and the quality and the impact and the pumping costs, all of that would be significantly different, I would imagine.
Yeah, there'll certainly be differences, I think, uh, the Nikasio, we're putting, you're collecting both. Local runoff as well as putting some Russian River water in this particular scenario.
But I I really think this is a a terrific way to look at the options and and. In essence, a decision tree of the moments in time when you can go one way or another, so. I really do appreciate your your map here and the the relative. Um, range of costs and yield, so it's it's a good, it I, this is good.
Yeah, thanks, I think when we get towards maybe refining this a little further, we'll, we can be tighter on on some of the cost estimates in the selection. Uh, the last part of the table on the right, I just wanted to. That we have reliability, environmental and a social rating. Uh, I think we thought maybe these would be a little bit more illustrative than they ended up being in in the way we've approached it right now, so. If you recall, we have for each of the alternatives, we had done a a specific rating, we had. Things like reliability, flexibility, feasibility, environmental energy permitting. So we've done an initial aggregation of of. Uh, reliability, flexibility and feasibility and called that our reliability rating in this table. Uh, we did the same to combine environmental energy and permitting ratings and called that our environmental category here. And then we combined social and our public acceptance ratings. Um. And called that our social rating for this one here, and then we've kind of just taken them from medium or low, medium, high in terms of their. Um, in terms of their benefits.
Maybe try to take a stab at a more granular approach than low, medium, high. Maybe five levels, I mean, they all look relatively equal and I would imagine there's a lot more nuance here. One through ten, so something.
Yeah, initially, all of our individual ratings are a five level rating, um, we combine them together because now we're looking at a whole pathway, not just. One particular project, so for example. When we take the green, the green red one here, it includes all of these actions plus all of the red actions to the endpoint. So by by having a portfolio of multiple actions, it tends to. Uh. Average out a lot of the scores, I'd say, so we can certainly look back and see if we can bring back the five, five level ratings.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna keep us moving forward, so we have our uh second portfolio, portfolio B, which is um new local supply. Uh, we have the actions that are included in this particular ones, we have the same kind of near term actions of the water shortage contingency plan, the conservation program. Uh, we didn't build in the regu- the regulatory driven program for this one. Um, and we looked at five and ten MGD of Marin Regional D cell, um, that's what's included here, we. You do either or, or you build a five and you expand to a ten, um, or ten to fifteen. Uh, we've also uh looked at the Petaluma Brackish desalination facility. Uh, we built in some of the recycled water expansions here, it's like kind of the the purple pipe expansions for Peacock Gap and San Quentin. And then we look, also looked at some of the uh, the reuse, larger scale reuse programs. And we have a. We have a, oh, let me show the, I'll show the final results first and then I'll back into the pathway, but. Uh, this particular portfolio that that's being shown on the plot here is is a a ten MGD desalination facility combined with. With um the actions were on the previous slide, um, the non, sorry, the. The actions that are not, no other D cell that's on the previous slide, so this is a ten MGD. Um. A plant. We we get pretty close to resolving the thirty thousand and I'd say within the the margin of. Of what we're characterizing, you'd call this almost meeting the criteria, you can see it. Um, because it doesn't include the storage enlargement. We get benefit in the stage, stage three restrictions, but not quite as. Uh, the amount of benefit that we got in the previous, in the previous portfolio. So this uh portfolio is really focused on it, like a ten MGD Marin Regional D cell with a little bit of recycled water built into it. Uh, the, the other line that's on there, the. Greenish line, I guess it is. Um, is if that were cut in half and we did five MGD as opposed to a ten MGD, so you can see the relative scale of. Of improvements we'd have during a drought period. Uh, in all of our assumptions, we assume that the projects are online and and operating. At all times, so there'd be all the years like outside of the drought here, we're producing supply, but we're not necessarily needing the benefit for that supply. And then similarly, for this portfolio, we've looked at different pathways and um the first part of the. The pathways are are quite similar, we have the. The water shortage contingency plan and TCP actions, a conservation program. We assume we build into the recycled water expansion. Um, programs, these could come on or off, but for this particular analysis, we kept them in. There's one option where you could go on the pedal, you could develop Petaluma Brackish desalination. Uh, the red op pathway is the one that we showed on the previous slide, so it's, it builds out the five and then the ten MGD. Uh, Marin D cell. Uh, but you could also, on the lower half of the chart here, is looking at kind of the the reuse pathways, you could go on a into um. Indirect potable reuse pathway that looks at smaller scale, it's roughly four and a half MGD, I believe. And then out to about seven MGD on on a regional program. Um, and then the last pathway on the bottom is using a direct potable reuse, um, going from a. CMSA, so kind of a smaller scale to again like a seven MGD scale. Uh, again, these these pathways produce um. Um, yield numbers that are pretty close to to the amount that we're identifying as a deficit, many of them, not all of them, but. The ones that uh carry out to the end are pretty, pretty close to the ten thousand acre feet. Uh, they have different cost numbers, obviously, associated with them. The level of investment for these types of facilities. And then slightly different reliability and uh environmental, social ratings.
Armin, just a quick question, um, and I I I know that we've had some questions about. The cost of um our estimated cost and I know they're 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 they're. Um, we should be looking at them with a a fairly wide margin of potential error, but have you. Are these the same cost estimate numbers that we have seen, that we saw recently, or have. The the either these that we're seeing here or any of the others that you're presenting tonight, have they been, have they been changed? have they been changed over what we've previously seen?
I'd say most of them are are the same as what you had previously seen. There have been some adjustments in the past month or so to refine mostly because the yield numbers had changed and the cost per acre foot numbers changed. They are all in the Good, Paul.
Yeah, there was just gonna add, you know, in the scorecard, Director Schmidt, these are are weighted costs. So that's why if you're trying to compare directly, right? If you if you look at the green pathway and the blue pathway and there's a cost per acre foot, that's a kind of a weighted cost for those two pathways. Is that right, Armin?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a it's a good reminder there, Paul. Yeah, because they're not one, we were showing previously, Director Schmidt, we showed each of the alternatives essentially as a single alternative. And now we're combining, you know, four or five alternatives on a pathway. So we're doing the the weighted cost of all of those actions by the amount of yield that they're, each one is producing.
But but Armin, the the inputs that go into each option that that are then combined to provide the weighted estimate, those inputs are the same numbers that we've been seeing now.
They're mostly the same, Director Kosh, a few have changed in small, small amounts since we last talked. They're they're what's in the they're consistent with what's in the the draft PDF document that you've been provided.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll Armin, is there any, is there any reality in putting time estimates on the timeline? Or is that just too dependent on other circumstances?
Yeah, that's, these are kind of meant to be illustrative, kind of more like the decision points and and the sequence. I think when we get to the last one, we we have times associated with each one of them when we think they could start generating. So yeah, we we could put we could put times on those, but I think we probably want to do that for the more kind of fully fleshed out portfolios, Director Fish. I'll keep us moving if there are no other questions for right now. The portfolio C, cuz we have two more portfolios to go through. This one is is relatively simple in its construct in that we're looking at diversifying imports by bringing water through one of the intertie options. In each of these intertie options, these been with an East Bay mud intertie or a Contra Costa or to the extent or for that matter, the North Bay Aqueduct intertie as well. We've assumed these are all water purchases from the Sacramento Valley. We assume that twenty thousand acre feet could be purchased and delivered in five thousand acre feet per year increments over a four year drought. That's that's the assumption we currently have. So it's essentially a five, you can think of it as a five thousand acre feet per year per year yields. We look we're looking at at that particular scenario against our four year drought. We know we had a, you know, an annual supply deficit that was greater than five thousand acre feet per year, which is the inner tie capability as we currently assumed. So it doesn't quite meet our our storage thresholds. It does help in in some of these these restriction periods, so preceding the drought. So this is making the assumption that we would take that option quite frequently. I think the key finding from this one here is that if if you were to go down this pathway, it's not it's not a complete pathway in and of itself. It would have to be combined with with other actions to help improve your resiliency. Or the the amount of purchase would have to be larger than what we've currently assumed. Which is kind of leads us to this pathway here. We had, we had four, essentially four different interties that were considered the it looks like we oh, yeah, we lost it. Okay, the top red line is the East Bay Mud Inter Tie. So we do these near term actions in the East Bay Mud Inter Tie. This is the purchase five thousand acre feet per year is essentially about twenty thousand acre feet over the four year period. We have a dashed line that says, well, to make this really a a resilient portfolio for this drought, it would have to be larger than that amount. We did not actually do that evaluation, but it would have to be larger. And you could go down a North Bay Aqueduct Inter Tie or Contra Costa Inter Tie route. They, both the Contra Costa and North Bay Aqueduct Inter Tie tend to have higher costs that you can see in the the gold pathway at thirty five hundred or the or the blue pathway element at forty two hundred, if you were to go down the North Bay Aqueduct. The East Bay, East Bay Mud Inter Tie is around the twenty five hundred for the the entire pathway again. And then we still have the San Francisco PUC intertie across the Golden Gate, which is a much lower yield intertie. And it really doesn't doesn't provide a sufficient amount to to resolve the the deficiencies, but we did include it just for robustness.
Armin, with this portfolio here, how are the, how are the costs estimated for the acre feet per year?
So all of these included a purchase cost from Yuba Water Agency. So we, when you I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but there was a purchase cost for for Yuba County Water Agency, and they're called Yuba Water now. Then a conveyance, a loss of water through the Delta carriage water cost where you lose some of the water crossing the Delta. And then using either East Bay Mud or Contra Costa or North Bay Aqueducts conveyance facilities. So we have a purchase price, we have a conveyance cost, and then we have a wheeling cost for the use of third party facilities in order to deliver. Then for
Thank you.
Yeah, then on top of that, we have kind of the direct intertie. So it's the San Rafael Bridge intertie for the East Bay Mud and Contra Costa, which is a cost that's borne directly by the district.
Armin, just to just to get check some of the qualitative scoring here. If we look at the SFPUC intertie, it the reliability rating, which includes feasibility, falls somewhere between high to medium. You know, from it, from my kind of naive perspective, it seems like quite a, it would be quite a, quite a feat to to connect to FF, SF PUC if if we're thinking about that across the Golden Gate Bridge. I may be wrong there, but but maybe just, just you know, talk to about the, just how you're thinking about the feasibility of these options.
Yeah, yeah, great, great observation. And again, we, Paul and I were talking over the past few days on the on some of that same observation is that, again, it's the the entire pathway and because this particular intertie has a relatively small volume, we don't think we can get more than a thousand acre feet out of that the PUC intertie. The weighting, the weighting of the scoring essentially doesn't give it a whole lot of weight for that whole pathway. So it's more weighted towards the conservation program, giving it a higher, you know, a higher relative score than than if we have, than the evaluation of the PUC intertie by itself. So there may be some we yeah, we may have to rethink how we do the scoring and maybe just provide the the predominant pathway score as opposed to the full pathway. I think that's the case for for many of these smaller smaller scale, long term projects that get dominated by what happens on earlier on the pathway.
Right. And and I think you know, we're, there, there are assumptions regarding as you've indicated here, the reliability of of and I I think those, I'm assuming that includes the reliability of the water supply that would be that would be accessed, whether it's Sonoma Water or Sacramento Valley or I you know, I it'd just be great to to, you know, maybe hear some of your, you know, not, not now, but but down the road, just the the strength of, you know, how you're feeling about some of the assumptions regarding reliability and how you came up with the the scoring on that.
Yeah. Yeah, glad to, glad to have that conversation. I mean, I think all of these water purchase ones are are challenging because you you'll be in the market with other entities who are also trying to purchase water at the same time during droughts. I think you've got challenging environmental conditions on a number of these interties. But yeah, we can certainly have a more detailed discussion around that.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's not a lot, just to go back on this. I mean, I think that given there's almost all the similar ratings, I think they vary much, you know, when I look at like the environmental rating on on this, if we're really looking at environmental energy and permitting, there's when when thinking of other options that we've already gone through and considering them relatively, I think they're, they don't, I I think that this, like this option, you know, has a lot more challenges from an environmental energy and permitting perspective than some of the other medium highs that we're, that we've looked at. Did you did you guys try to create a a scale that was applicable across all the alternatives? Or we, is this, should we be looking at these ratings kind of more relative to the specific portfolio?
Well, the scale is consistent across all portfolio, all of the portfolios. But I, but I think the my, one of my observations is that we're, because we're looking at complete pathways, we get a lot of this dilution of dilution of scoring. And I think we could, we could probably do the next round, maybe do a little bit better job of looking at kind of the dominant, just evaluating the dominant action within the portfolio as opposed to as opposed to the full pathway.
I think that that would make sense. It's probably more what it would, whatever is the 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 controlling challenge. So if there's a, the lowest reliability, the lowest environmental, the lowest social are probably, it would be a better way to look at it because it would be the limiting factor most likely in the consideration of an alternative.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Well, we'll certainly, we'll take that up next week and see if we can do some refinements on that. Okay, I want to get us to our our last portfolio, which was really looking at kind of all of the actions and then we used a threshold of two thousand dollar, twenty five hundred dollars an acre foot costs or any, any action that had incremental cost of of twenty five hundred dollars per acre foot or lower. We included in this low cost portfolio. So it includes, you know, the regulation, the conservation programs, it does this operational strategy for Sonoma. Sorry, this should say, or in here also, it has a store, one of the storage enlargements, it has a regional groundwater bank. These Phoenix Bon Tempe and Electrification Suluhuli. And then it has a, it has the Petaluma Brackish desalination facility included. What I found quite interesting in this portfolio is that without kind of a looking at this in advance, we, we, there are a lot of low cost, high value options and part of that low cost, low cost portfolio. Just kind of blindly implementing that where you're able to resolve the thirty thousand acre feet, the shortage limits and reduce the number, the frequency of times hitting the stage three reductions. I think a big component of that is the storage augmentation that that gets added in this portfolio. Enables you to get through that drought in a a fair better through that extreme drought. And because we didn't particularly have a strategy for this portfolio, we just showed it as a single line that all of these projects were were implemented over over time. There wasn't a decision pathway for this particular portfolio.
Armin, I can ask a question. I think you you might have answered earlier, but I just need a quick reminder, the estimated output or water available to Marin through a Petaluma Brackish D cell?
Yeah, so I did not answer that for us. A great, good question. We've assumed it's a five MGD D cell facility. It has a quite a bit of uncertainty around it, though. I'd say both the regional groundwater bank and the Petaluma Brackish D cell facilities. We had to make assumptions, best estimates, but there's not been kind of conceptual studies yet. There's not been geologics, geological or hydrogeological studies to evaluate that. So they are kind of like best estimates for this level of planning.
Thank you.
They answered directly was five MGD for the Brackish D cell and and the regional groundwater bank is kind of like one point two MGD per year. We assume that it's five thousand acre feet could be delivered over four years.
So Armin, I I think if I'm hearing you right, the way to think about these different portfolios is that they're illustrative, that the circles are the choices and that we could mix and match to help put together a portfolio that we think would work in short, medium and long term. And and so seeing your circles broken out separately would help us do the math, right? Because you had a bunch of them that had rows that had three circles in each of them. So then we're like, okay, it's a combo. And 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 so having the details that I think Ron G was asking for earlier would be really good as 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 a starting point. But yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the individual alternatives are are all documented and presented previously. So those are the individual circles. And now we're really trying to develop combined strategies, so we can we can point you to where that's that's located or help illustrate it better. I wanted to kind of jump to comparing the portfolios, so just kind of pulling them all together, not looking at all the pathways. Now, in the four that we analyzed, we we have the four portfolios A through D. I'd say we get three of the four kind of in and of themselves met all the goals or pretty close to meeting all the goals. The only one that that didn't was the diversifying imports one, which probably needs to be combined with other actions in order to to achieve the goals. Just it was not the supply was insufficient for this particular four year drought. You can see the yield ranges. These are dependent upon which pathway you would take on on each of those portfolios. Same with the blended cost ranges. They're dependent upon the pathway that you might take. We provided the reliability environmental and social ratings across the summary scores across them. And then in the very bottom of the table, we really tried to indicate kind of what is the driver for for the performance of the portfolio. So what we found, you know, conservation is in all of our portfolios and also is a is a pretty large contributor to reducing the size of the deficit by by reducing demand. The storage element tends to be a really strong component in the portfolios that it was included in in providing the in providing that drought reliability. Then obviously, in the new supply ones that we're looking at, D cell and reuse supplies and and SAC Valley imports are the drivers. So we've taken kind of high level findings from from all that work. I'm sure there was more than this, but I guess the stepping way back is that we we see that there's multiple viable pathways for drought resiliency. And I think the portfolios were really helpful in demonstrating that, both hopefully for you, but also for our team and looking at how they would perform. As I mentioned, the conservation and drought restrictions are are key elements that have to be on the table and in my view are kind of no regret, low regret options. Also, I think the operational strategy to maximize Sonoma Waters is a a relatively low cost, high potential benefit, particularly in the early parts of the drought. The storage augmentation provided actually more benefits than I was originally anticipating. Particularly when it's combined with some additional conveyance to allow Russian River water to be put into that storage directly. The the D cell reuse and the import would either have to be generated at the appropriate scale if they were to be implemented or combined with some other actions to make the portfolios more more robust. And then lastly, I think that low cost portfolio was was a And then lastly, I think that low cost portfolio was was a useful reference in that we. There are available actions that are. Less expensive, these are still more expensive than supplies you're playing for currently, but are on the lower end of the ones we've considered. That provide a viable pathway. And really what we're wanted to use the portfolios for was how do we now get to thinking about how do we integrate? Various options into an integrated uh. Uh, portfolio and roadmap. So that's what I wanted to to shift to on the last slide here if we could. Um, this is one example where we've taken kind of our. Our view of the the portfolios, our findings, the analysis and and tried to build out one example of an integrated roadmap. That would show how how you could. Get from where we are today to various targets and. And the projects that might be implemented. So on this particular slide, we have. We've broken kind of the actions into five groupings, there're in district improvements. Sonoma Marin partnerships, uh, local storage enlargement. Uh, new supply development and then increasing conservation. And each of the green, the green or the light green ones are what what I would call are almost kind of low regret actions, these are ones that could be implemented. Essentially tomorrow, next year. To start generating local supply or generate supply benefit. Relatively quickly. The.
I I think it's it's important to. Um, dig in deeper into your water conservation program. Opportunities and options. Uh, the electrifying Sulehuli and stopping those trucks of diesel going out there every day to 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 supply the energy. Is a pretty clear cost. And succinct, but there are many water conservation program options for us. Some easier than others, some take more investment. Uh, some are revolve around communication and will have very, very different impacts, so I I I I would. I know this is not completely your. Your your area of research, although we have done some with Medaus, but um. I I would love to see a blow up of of all the different circles costs, you know, savings and and opportunities with our water conservation program. And and have that be not just a a one lined element. But a highly analyzed element of where we can where we can invest, I I do. Very much appreciate your. Two and a half, five and ten thousand acre feet targets on the bottom, I'd love to see the board adopt that. As um, as a target, as our goal, and that'll help bring this this program together. So I appreciate this chart and I want to further highlight the importance of focusing on. Conservation opportunities and choices that we might have to invest there.
Yeah, thanks for that comment, Director Smith, I think Kerry Pollard is a and in our in our report and the appendix has quite a bit more detail on. How that specific conservation program could be implemented and then. And it describes the various elements of the program and and how they arrived at the certain numbers associated with it. So I think there's. Each one of these blocks probably has a whole conversation in of itself, but but certainly that one. Uh, the the targets on the bottom. Um, were targets that I felt are fully achievable with the actions that we've put on this on this chart here. In fact, if you were to total up each of the the actions, they would exceed the target. Um, but. But as you progress through time, you may find that some of those actions are are not viable, or they don't produce the benefits that were currently estimated, so I think it's. It's um, good common practice to over to. Uh, target something much higher than what you're. Or try to have on the books a larger amount than what your actual target is. So this twenty five hundred by by twenty twenty five is is, I think, very achievable, I think the five thousand by twenty twenty eight is achievable. Um, if these actions move forward. And and I think it is achievable to get towards the long term at at ten thousand acre feet of new new potential.
Armin, what what is what is the, you know, you know, it's it's hard not to jump immediately to the low cost portfolio, given the benefits that you outlined there. Is it, you know, is is are there, is there enough uncertainty there with, for example, the brackish desalinization and 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 other elements that. That don't push us more strongly in that direction?
Yeah, that's a good question, I I think that the low cost certainly you you would go towards it, I think. They're driven by actions that are quite uncertain, which is. They're both in this portfolio also, though, like the Pedaluma Brackish is in this or this integrated roadmap. And the regional groundwater bank is also in this integrated roadmap. Uh, but should these should these not produce or not not produce the numbers or due to political reasons not not move forward? Wanted to have enough other elements in the portfolio. So I think this is really a little bit of the art of strategic planning is. Uh, there's a, we have all the evaluation that's been done, now we want to piece them together and we want to look at where, how do you strategically combine them and? And how do you have enough? Coals on the fire should one die out, but you don't don't get cold.
So Armin, just to be clear, in terms of what you're showing here in the light blue, that you know, that. Reach to the ten thousand acre feet, developing conveyance to storage participating in a regional groundwater bank and increasing local storage, you're not saying that all three of those need to be accomplished. Those are just three pathways which may some may persist, some may be a little bit of each in order to get to that ten thousand. Or could you could you get to that ten thousand in your analysis by just developing conveyance to storage, for example?
Yeah, I think if you took if all of these are implemented, I think we're at. Around fourteen thousand acre feet, if everything on this slide is implemented. So some could come off or that could be reduced in their ability and still meet the ten thousand target. But we do, we do think that if you were to, this is an example right now, but. Using this example, we would. We would be pursuing each of these three blue paths together. In union, not not either or. This would be, and if one falls off, you probably still have enough buffer to meet your target.
Okay, I think that's helpful, it would, you know, it for for things like this, like especially. These kind of maps, if there is a way to to put a a number on increased local storage, like what would be needed. Numerically to of additional storage, whether that takes the full twenty thousand or whether. That in order to get there, if you do those other things with ten be sufficient, it might help us to. To estimate the the kind of local storage or the quantity that. That we would be looking to include in in an alternative like this.
Yeah, good suggestion, I I just on the storage piece. We think twenty thousand acres feet is is the target you should look for, I don't think. I don't think going lower than twenty thousand acre feet would make. A huge amount of sense based on the investment. And it seems to be providing quite quite a bit of benefit, so. We can put numbers to each of these, but we wanted to just show it kind of illustrative as here's an example of an integrated roadmap that that might be. You know, where the where the team is heading, so.
I I guess I want to come back to then to that comment that you just made, then, so are you saying that that essentially without doing twenty thousand acre feet? Of storage, you. Are concerned that this roadmap or the other ones that include a storage component? Will achieve the the modeled benefits?
Well, we only simulated the twenty thousand acre feet, so I. Can't state. As part of the portfolios, so we've only simulated the the twenty. Um, I think there's there's a lot of combinations of the actions here that you probably are still. Exceeding that ten thousand acre feet target, even if you were to reduce the storage. I guess I was, I was just trying to go to the alternative, if you're going to enlarge a reservoir. It probably makes less sense to try to fine tune that. You would want to build yourself some buffer and enlargement. Um, given all the other considerations being the same.
Okay, well, I know we've looked at other store like, you know, the the spillway gates, you know, being another way to increase storage, which which we didn't. Model here, but you know, I'll. Um, I'll just say that, you know, that that I think the storage option is one of the ones that is um, that is particularly complicated because. We we really have not. Factored in what the Water Board would require in terms of environmental water releases. From additional storage, let alone. Opening up our existing water rights and might require release releases from other parts of our storage. Because the understanding of 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 in stream flow needs to meet environmental benefits. Um, is shifted over time and it probably hasn't gotten less. So I I'm in in as much as I want to continue to. Understand the importance of storage and the and the feasibility of it, I'm I am. A little concerned about a lot of these options seem to require that. Um, as a as an element and should that fall off for any number of different reasons? It, um, I'm, I want to be able to see what other pathways we have to get to that. Um, that target of additional water supply.
Yeah.
I I agree with your comment, Monty, I think that was well said.
Armin, maybe the um, the variable that we haven't talked about yet, which makes me the most nervous are the. At the capital costs for for the different options, you know, we've looked at cost per acre foot. Um, are we going to be seeing those and, you know, um, layered on to this?
Right?
Um, yeah, we, their capital costs are baked into the. Cost per acre foot, so we take the capital and the O and M and. And then they're converted into cost per acre foot, but we can also, once we. Because we're kind of looking at these multiple portfolios and and now this example integrated roadmap, we wanted to. Kind of present to the board where we're heading, then if. Um, if the board wants us to move that direction is develop a couple integrated roadmaps that are more fully fleshed out with capital costs. Uh, in addition to the uh, per acre foot, so you could see what. What type of investment is being asked for to move down that roadmap.
I think what you're asking is like, the capital cost plus the ongoing. Incremental operating expenses over time are calculated into a net present value of your cost per acre foot, is that? My, did I say that right?
That's that's how they are currently shown.
Yeah, and I think that's what you're looking for, right, Ron G?
No, actually, Jed, the, you know, the investment required to to.
Also, also that, yeah, okay.
And we started to pull that together for the entire pathways, we we just don't have that just yet, so. But that would be our next, our next step and. But we wanted to present where we're where we are with you folks and and get some reaction and. Let you know where we're we're heading. I think we're actually getting quite close to. To building out some. Uh, roadmaps that. So that we can dig into some further detail in. I'll just wrap up and. Happy to continue the conversation, but I I think that our next steps are this further evaluation of the portfolios and roadmaps. Um, we hope to be back with you in February. Um, to talk about the presentation of recommended roadmaps. And then we have a draft, uh, working draft of a report that that's been shared, there are sections of that report that are not. Complete because we're still in the process of evaluating the portfolios and and the roadmaps, but. But I think the the bulk of the core supporting material is in there. So we're we'll be working to finalize that that report and to make a complete. A complete report, it has three appendices currently in the main body right now.
And Armin, we do have on February sixth, a public workshop, we'll we'll be presenting this information. And the public will have an opportunity to engage directly with the team. As well.
Okay, is that, is that what you have for us so far, Armin?
Yeah, that concludes our presentation, thank you.
Okay, um, are there other board comments?
Um, I, you know, I just, I I I know that there's. So much information that is being distilled and it takes a lot of effort to. Make it presentable and I, this is, this is, I think, you know. Armin, you and your team have gone very far in that direction, so I really appreciate the um. The effort that's gone into the presentation and explanation.
Yeah, thank you, this is, yeah, that is the challenge right now, how to make it presentable.
Yeah, Monty, I'd I'd like the um, uh, some of these options taken off the list, like let's simplify, let's start to reduce. Let let's be really clear about some of those circles that are overly expensive and or. Potentially overly litigious or. Controversial. Uh, let let's start to take some of these options off and and I think that'll help out our process. Uh, concur with Ron G, thank you everyone for your. Energy into this, and I think our decision tree is coming closer.
Uh, Director Smith, I'd echo those comments as well, this is very clear. Uh, presentation, so Armin, thank you very much, Paul, thank you very much for all the work you guys have done to to bring this up to speed. Um, and also appreciate the um, short, medium and long range falls that Director Smith had. I brought up, that's also important to me. Um, and to echo what Jed, what you just said, I agree, and I think for me, the dependence on intertie is probably one of the ones that I would look to. To move away from if we have to start narrowing our our view, um, as we're looking at other options. Um, and my only other add would be in the. In the integrated roadmap that shows that example is, um, look to enhance the. The real, I guess redundancy a little bit in our in our storage system to some extent, I know that the D cell is in there, but I would like to. Um, further explore some, at least the expansion of the recycled water piece, uh, because we do have capacity to generate that water and it seems a shame if we don't look to expand it, but again, Armin, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other board comments? Um, I think, you know, I I would, just kind of following on the comment that I provided before, I I think I would look for an alternative or um. Or a portfolio here that that um. That does not rely on 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 surface stor- in in increasing surface storage. And maybe, you know, I don't know whether, honestly, and this might be something that we could look into. Whether raising, whether um, whether putting in, um, you know, inflatable dams or something at our spillway. To increase storage, it will trigger a new water right. Um, I think understanding that is really going to be an important piece, but I'd like to see what our pathway is if that, if the permitting. Issues related to new storage are a significant impediment, what are what are? The options that we can best put together. Uh, taking into account that limitation.
Yeah, President Schmidt, I think that's an excellent comment, um, and you know, Armin sort of alluded to it in the sort of penultimate slide where we had those three. Blue bars going across. I think in any roadmap, we're going to want to target, you know, more sort of options, because there is still much for us to learn. About some of these options, as you're pointing out, um, in in terms of whether they end up being viable or not. Uh, quite frankly, so we will want to be pursuing, I think, sort of almost in a parallel manner. An effort on on a number of supply options. So that we can answer those questions and and some of those. Projects will, you know, drop off or fall behind others. Um, in the timeline, if you like. Um, so I think that's a, that's a good observation.
Okay, uh, should we open up the public comment?
Um, yes, we have more than five speakers, so I just want to remind the public that you have three minutes to leave your comment. At the fifteen seconds left of your comment, there you will hear a sound to please wrap up. Um, your last um. Comment, not to be repetitive, but it is. Um, so, um, I have first, the first three, Roger Roberts, Ed Jamison and David Behar. So go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
I unmuted at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, there's some, this is very interesting series of scenarios. Uh, but there's some elements to this that are still not really clear to me. Uh, but there's some elements to this that are still not really clear to me. Uh, and I just wanted to raise those. One is, uh, in all of these scenarios, have this, have they included and integrated the availability of, of Sonoma cost water, uh, or Sonoma water generally, uh, which has limitations tied to the level of Lake Sonoma. So it's not clear to me whether those availabilities of Sonoma water are consistent throughout all the scenarios uh, that are provided or just what the assumption is in that regard. And I think I understand you that the cost per acre foot does include the capital cost. Uh, just please reassure me that that's the case. And it is not clear to me whether we're talking about a 20,000 acre foot target of resiliency or it's a 10,000 acre foot target of resiliency. That should be clear uh, that that's what's really on the table. Thank you very much.
You're muted, Terry.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Ed Jamison?
Yes, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. With no supporting forecast info that I've been able to find, the big 2017 study by RMC declared that we could survive a six-year drought with conservation only required in years five and six. We're now almost 11 months into the Jacobs process and we've still not been given an explanation of how they've concluded that we only need about 8,000 acre feet of new supply. We need to see a simple forecast of how that could possibly be. No sophisticated modeling is required for this exercise. All the necessary numbers are available from MMWD's actual drought experience, except for, one, how much water we may get from Sonoma? We've not been told what is being assumed for this critical supply element in an extended drought. Second, what they've assumed our stream release requirements will be. We know that we released 13 TAF and 12 TAF in the first two years of our recent drought. And finally, what level of emergency conservation is assumed for each year? Shoot, we've not even been shown what is assumed for our baseline demand. Is it the 28.4 TAF we were told by MMWD back around June? And we need to see that the forecast begins and ends with the November 30th reservoir lows, not their highs in the spring. We'd also need to see a simple slide showing beginning and ending reservoir levels and each of four years assume supply and demand data with assumed Sonoma supply as a line item. Assuming we would take extra Sonoma water, even when not in drought, that will be spilled will likely be unnecessarily expensive. And ultimately, our drought will be Sonoma's drought, as Mr. Roberts just pointed out. In stage three, WSCP mandatory 30% conservation may not be a reasonable planning assumption. In our recent scare, I believe we only achieved about 18 to 20% conservation over the course of a full year. We need a plan that doesn't rely upon more than 20 to 25% conservation in a true emergency. And the baseline demand forecast implicitly already includes about 5% conservation since it was based on three years historical average usage, not peak drought year usage. We need a plan that will no longer threaten to destroy the beauty of Marin because of an inadequate supply of water. Early last year, Jacob said we could have local D cell online in three to four years, not eight to 12 years. It's our only significant drought resistant hope and we need to commit to press ahead with it on an expedited basis. And contrary to what you've shown, Sonoma brackish D cell doesn't seem to be likely earlier than D cell in San Rafael. It's time for Jacobs to pull back the curtains on their black box modeling. Graphics don't cut it. The simple forecast slide I've suggested will make all of this stuff clear. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. After Mr. Jamison, we have David Behar, Phil Sauter and Larry Minnicky. Go ahead, Mr. Behar.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Very interesting presentation, Armin, very complex and, and deep. I, I look forward to, as I'm sure all board members do and other members of the public, to the full report that goes into the details, it gives all of the background on all of this. Like, that'll be extremely helpful. I want to echo the concerns expressed by President Schmidt on storage, expanding storage. I think there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of risks associated with that particular project. And to the extent that we're going to rely on 20,000 acre feet being produced out of that on almost any timeframe is something that I, I think needs an in-depth look. Uh, I want to register support for Director Kush's question on capital costs. I know those are coming. I think that's a really important way this all plays out. How does capital get spread? That's a form of resilience itself because it really, there's results in debt, rate increases and, and financial impacts on, on everyone. Uh, and the timing matters with that. But I want to in particular commend Jacobs for bringing adaptation pathways into the mix. This is a really uh, highly touted approach to understanding that long-term actions and the various, you know, scenarios that arise when you're looking for long-term resilience. The element that's not in here, Armin, I'd love to hear your thoughts on this at some point is, are, are the thresholds for loss of resilience and the triggers that might give you an idea that you're going to lose resilience? This is a bit of a static scenario kind of approach where you have the four-year bad drought in the 2040s. What happens if it happens in the 2030s? What happens if it happens in the late 2020s into the 2030s? What happens if it doesn't happen till the 2060s? All those things could change the nature of resilience, not in a disastrous way. It just might mean more years of level one, two or three drought restrictions, but it's really useful to portray that in an adaptation pathways map. And I'm hoping that we can see something like that uh, in the report so that you can look at the points at which you are no longer on a resilient pathway, but have to change to a different one, either because the yield of your projects is less than you thought, the nature of drought is changing. Uh, we're in a five or a six-year drought just as severe as the four-year, those kinds of things. It's a lot harder with drought because it's such a short phenomenon. I appreciate that. It's very different than the way we use adaptation pathways for sea level rise, which is a different kind of phenomenon. Much more slow moving, but I, I think it'd be really useful to see adaptation pathways and kind of all of its skills in, in the final approach that we use. Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Phil Sauter, please.
Um, many thanks to staff, to the consultants and to the board for the increased support for conservation. The progress over the past months has been very inspiring to see. I think one thing we can say is that without 40% of our residential water going into the ground, we'd have a three-year water supply right now. What we don't know is how many of the district's 60,000 customers are using this 40% of drinking water for outdoor irrigation and where they are. My starting guess was that the old 2080 rule applies. And when I asked Paul recently if I could get this data, he felt that it was even more skewed than that. And it may be a relatively small number of heavy outdoor users who are using this high amount of water. More than that, we also know that most of this use is in a fairly small geographic area. So as we look at water supply options, it seems it might be reasonable to begin to decouple outdoor irrigation from indoor potable water. There's no reason to saddle the majority of the district's customers with tens of millions of dollars of new infrastructure and higher rates and force them to drink D cell water or retreated brackish water when we already have enough indoor water. It seems much more reasonable to use D cell water or retreated brackish water for outdoor use. Perhaps instead of today's 2% non-potable water, we could get to 20 or 30%. So let's understand who these heavy irrigation customers are, how much water they're using and where they're located. Let them know that we can find a reliable supply of non-potable water for outdoor use, although it may come from a semi-treated D cell plant and it may come through a purple pipe or from a tanker truck. And it may cost more, even more than potable water. We've heard many times that these few customers with large green lawns don't mind paying what's required. So let's look at a model that doesn't degrade or waste our existing potable water supply. In past meetings, I've been a strong advocate for conservation and I'll continue to be. But I'm starting to sharpen my point of view to one of conservation of potable water from our watershed. And that allows the district to find semi-potable water for irrigation and as much as the traffic will bear. So my request is that we get an understanding of our customer base, find out where the heavy water use occurs and consider water supply options specifically for that customer base. This analysis is not difficult and I volunteered to analyze the numbers for free if nobody else wants to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Minnicky, then Christie Denton Cohen and Al Grimmet, please.
Good evening, all. And Armin and Paul and staff, thank you so much for the presentation tonight. There's a, a lot to absorb here. And I'm going to focus in on one specific area under Portfolio D, the low-cost portfolio. And that is the dedicated conveyance approach. Um, there, there are three offered. One is Stanford to Nacasio, Castagna to Nacasio and Katari to Sula Huli. That's interesting. My question would be is why is there not a Katari to Nacasio option there? Um, and along with that, uh, how will costs be determined? Is this going, this transmission system is going to be an underground pipeline and above-ground pipeline, a combination of both? And that will cover my, uh, my points for this evening. Oh, the last thing, yes, I'm sorry, is if you're looking at something of, of conveyance going to Nacasio, would that make sense for looking at a combination of movable gates? And let's see how much water we get total doing something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Christie Denton Cohen and then Al Grimmet, please.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for all of this. Um, I think I go back to what Jed was talking about earlier and the importance of communication with the public because there's so many nuances here that many of us will not understand. I think I'll be a little bit repetitive in what Roger and Ed mentioned earlier. And, and every time I've seen any of these meetings, I've wondered what Sonoma is thinking about all this and have they even been consulted with about the Petaluma brackish D cell plant? We have no idea of what their thoughts are on it. And I'm also concerned, even talking with friends that live in, in Sonoma and have ranches and so on up there, is how willing are they going to be to share their water with us for how much longer? So another question would be, is four years planning enough? Is that enough time that we should be planning for additional water? Is 20, 20,000 acre feet or 10,000 acre feet enough? And try to, you know, how long does the conservation go on? I keep wondering, should I still be, you know, letting the PB or should I, you know, take a bath now that we have more water? How, how consistent do we need to be in our conservation? So those are my questions and hats off to all of you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Grimmet, please.
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you for, for the presentation and thanks to the board and staff and, and the consultants for renewing focus on conservation as a, as a strategy. Also want to echo support for the public comments about looking at super users of potable water for irrigation. Uh, and likewise getting into the, the weeds, uh, so to speak, to, uh, understand where our potable water is being used as part of fleshing out that, that conservation portfolio in greater detail. Uh, I also want to note, um, and, and this is a question for, for Armin. Will, will the board and the public be provided information, granular information about the environmental costs, including the greenhouse gas emissions associated with the subcomponents of each portfolio? Uh, the reason I ask is that every jurisdiction in Marin, including the county itself, uh, has declared a climate emergency by resolution. And as part of the, those, the, those resolutions, they have instructed their city staff to evaluate all city actions through the lens of, of climate impact. I don't see that happening here. I see, uh, information about climate impact being lumped together with other factors and abstracted as we get further into the process. Uh, I think we're too far into a climate crisis. We are assuming a climate crisis is the very premise for this portfolio exercise. I think we're too far into this crisis to be ignoring uh, emissions as a component of our decision matrix. And while we can say we're not ignoring it because we're treating it as a qualitative factor among many, uh, you know, emissions in particular does lend itself quite well to quantification. Uh, and, and it can be translated into a cost parameter that can give the board greater visibility into something that the customers and their elected representatives have, have clearly stated as a priority. Namely, to, to not just adapt to this crisis, but, but to, uh, you know, help mitigate it by not bringing online new portfolios of water that, that have massive emissions associated with them. And I don't know that that is the case, uh, but, but neither does anyone else till we see the underlying information about the greenhouse gas impact. So thanks again. This is a complex exercise and, and an amazing job. Uh, and I think this is just fine tuning as we look deeper into conservation and into some of the quantifiable environmental impacts. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Paul Mann, Elaine Dulcini and Clayton Smith. Mr. Mann, please.
Hi, good evening. Paul Mann from Water Champions. Uh, first, I just want to echo Al Grammit's comment on carbon emissions impacted. It's very important. Uh, also Roger Roberts, I believe, with regards to conservation of potable water. Uh, that's, that's a big, big deal. Armin, thank you for this presentation of portfolios. There's, there's a lot to think about. Uh, clearly it's easy to look at something like intertie or D cell. You know, I think we can all understand roughly what that means. Uh, but it does leave me sort of confused of, of what water conservation program, what falls under there? And just echoing on Director Jed Smith's comment, it, it would be great to know what are the components? I'm not sure if it means, uh, just conservation and restrictions or their actual, you know, water reuse and, um, water efficiency solutions that are going to be employed. So what are those and what are the, uh, the, the impacts in terms of acreage footage that, that they would generate by each component? How do we get a hold of that? It'd be great to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Uh, Ms. Elaine Dulcini, please.
Thank you. Um, good evening. And, um, I am, am excited, uh, this evening to, um, just be, be able to speak on and, and have, have a voice on this meeting. I'm not very well prepared with something written down, but I, I, I wanted to say thank you to Armin for all, all the work and everybody that worked with him. I, I personally, um, was a little confused about why the, the storage augmentation was so, uh, it seemed like it was, it was like a major theme on all of the scenarios and, and that spillway gates was knocked off. It wasn't really included. And I, I would like to know why that was. Um, kudos to all the people who commented on more water conservation. I just would like to see the avoidance of permanent environmental devastation uh, when reservoir augmentation is involved. That's my main point here and would like to, I would like to see, I think that the spillway gates were a good option. And then they weren't really discussed this evening and I kind of wanted, wanted to know why. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dulcini. Mr. Clayton Smith, please.
Okay. Um, I'm going to go a little out of the box. It's interesting that at the Control Fest at Davos, Switzerland recently, Al Gore made a, a long talk and he talked about something he called rain bombs. Well, he might know about rain bombs because the Department of Defense back in the Vietnam War period had this thing called Operation Popeye in which they dropped rain bombs on the Ho Chi Minh Trail to interdict the North Vietnamese supplies down into South Vietnam. So this is a 50, 60-year-old technology of rain bombs. And it just, I thought interesting that we've just had two different years in a row of rain bombs here in Marin. And is Al Gore basically telling us something about the future? Given the geoengineering involved and given the fact that he's in connection and contact, I'm sure, with the people involved in geoengineering and who can create rain bombs. And so I think we might actually be, uh, experiencing a future where we're going to have more supply uh, than we might have thought possible just in the recent past. Particularly now that we see that probably half a year's worth of water consumption for the county of Marin is basically going out to sea right now. So I'm in favor of expanding local storage and I like that 20,000 acre feet. I think that should be a minimum goal. And I would actually think more is the better. And I hear constantly the obstruction for this is these allocations to so-called nature or the environment. or the environment, which begs the question, when are we going to challenge these required allocations of water to feed the fishes? Perhaps it's time to have an open, public discussion on this obstacle to our water security. Make it a political event and force our representatives in Sacramento to put their feet to the fire and show us where their priorities really lie, particularly now that they want to foist on the county 14,000 new houses, which need their water too. And so I think it's an opportune time to actually see where they're at, because I think the time has come for us to start having a little bit of practicality or simplicity of thinking to get a job done that has been needed to get done for probably the last, at least, I think, the last 30 years. So thank you.
Next three speakers I have are Barbara Reedy, Susan Coleman, and April Ankafar. I go ahead, Ms. Reedy.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am also not super prepared, but there were two things that jumped out at me in this presentation. And one of them has been mentioned several times, and that is the fact that the spillway gate augmentation was just dropped off. I would love to see in the storage augmentation definition, a more granular approach. I'd like to see what exactly that means. So by that, I mean each individual reservoir, how high are you planning to raise it? Or how much acre feet would be provided by the spillway gates? You know, I would just like to see a more granular approach to this. The second thing that jumped out at me that I would love to see also spelled out a bit more clearly, and that is the, the transportation of water from Cattati to Sulehuli. I am wondering by what means that word "transportation" is going to happen, if that is a pipeline or if that is a truck? How does that happen? And has, is there a cost estimate yet for all of the land that you have to go through if you're building a pipeline? You know, how does that happen? And I had another point, but it has slipped my mind in the excitement of speaking. So I merely, those are my questions. I'm going to go with that. I have a personal desire to see, as my sister stated, a smaller destruction in the implementation of the water storage option. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reedy. Ms. Coleman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time and energy on such a complex problem. I'm here as a member of, well, Board of Directors, member of Responsible Growth in Marin. I have just two questions. I'd like to know to what extent the RENA goals of adding 14,405 residences by 2030 has been captured in the projections. At 2.5 pre-residence per unit, we're looking at 36,000 more people in the county. And then secondarily, I'd like to understand, and, and forgive me because I'm new to these meetings, so it's clearly complex, and I apologize if you've already addressed these things, and I'll just have to pick them, pick up the details when I see them on the next meeting. To what extent has pricing been used as an incentive to get people to conserve? I'm going back to one of the earlier speakers who is suggested differentiating between irrigation water and potable water and pricing it differently. I think that'd be a great alternative, and people have expressed the willingness to spend more money to keep their gardens going. And I think we do need to consider that before we embark on very expensive infrastructure projects. Thank you so very much for your time. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Next is Ms. April Ankafar, and then after Ms. April Ankafar is 1402. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm April Ankafar with Native Water Systems. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be a part of the discussion. Thank you to the board members and to the engineering firm for all of the hard work. With my limited time, I'm just going to focus on something I would love to know more, which, again, to, to support and advocate the conservation recycled water effort. What I really want to ask specifically in this vein is each of those dots on the map tonight is its own portfolio within itself. Back in the day when we explored each piece individually, there were these amazing rubrics of different types of ways that these elements were weighted. I really enjoyed that. And back at that time, the recycled and water conservation pieces did not completely have portfolios I felt were absolutely what I feel would make a magnanimous impact. And so because now in these mixed portfolios, I can no longer see the miniature portfolio of conservation or recycling, I feel concerned about the impact it's being rated in this larger scale. And I know that it's never maybe at this moment going to compete with our very large centralized ideas, yet for decent, for decentralized, small-scale strategies, water conservation and recycling actually have this unique approach of compounding exponential benefit with each incremental increase topped on each other with time. These are very sensitive and unique cost-benefit analysis. So I just want to note in, tonight you mentioned in Portfolio C versus B, the only difference I can see on the green path is recycled water. That gives recycled water a 400-acre foot yield, and, and I just feel like that seems incredibly low, especially when I saw the gray water numbers over the increase. There's just so much information. All I'm trying to say is that under conservation and recycling, I also want to point in my last 40 seconds, when we talk about 10, 20, 30% restrictions, we're looking at water conservation as a new water culture and a lifestyle with water, where those 10, 20, 30% restrictions become 10, 20, 30% ways we naturally reduce because of a new relationship with water. And in my last 15 seconds, that new relationship with water comes from visibly seeing our water infrastructure instead of hiding it. We need to daylight it and make it a part of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. And 1402, please.
James Holmes Lartsburg. Regarding conservation, I keep remembering the consultant who said that the sponge has already been squeezed, which is certainly the case. Regarding supply expansion, it seems to me your two big choices are off-site sources or onsite sources. And regarding that, you have two great vagaries, one for each. Off-site sources depend on the cooperation of others or the kindness of strangers, as a great playwright once put it in this line. On-site storage depends on the cooperation of the water board. As Director Schmidt said, that is the key problem we have for that otherwise crucial source. It's a political problem. We need to start moving to clear away that obstacle by legislation, if necessary, so we can provide for ourselves on our own property, or we are going to have a huge problem because we will be dependent on the kindness of strangers or the kindness of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do not have any further speakers.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Actually, I do. It's, I apologize. It's Holly Bragman. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Holly's husband, Larry, actually.
Hi, Larry.
So just on local storage, North Marin is moving ahead and has been in contact with the water board. And at this point informs me that they are not having much pushback from the state water board. So I really think we should get moving on that and start putting some exploratory lines of communication out to let them know what we're thinking about. The other thing I want to point out is we may be able to increase local storage without the complexity of movable spillway gates by simply raising the spillways. And I think we need to take a real close look at the bathymetric studies that were done about five years ago to determine local water storage, to see whether raising the spillways will even impact the total impound volume that we're, that we are able to get out of those basins. In other words, we need to see whether the bathymetric studies are based on the lip of the dam or the elevation of the spillways. So I think there may be some play there. Last point is I've talked to some of the local environmental groups about raising the spillways, and raising the spillways may have some environmental benefits. Number one, it'll give us a more reliable source of environmental releases. Number two, it may give us cooler water to release. We've never really hit our temperature goals in releasing water for the salmon. And if we raise those spillways, we may be able to do that. So last point is, I don't know why Bon Tempe Dam is not included in the spillway analysis, that we're only looking at Kent and Nacasio. I think Bon Tempe, you may, we may be able to raise the spillways there by a few feet. And if you combine smaller-scale projects at Bon Tempe, Nacasio, and Kent, you may hit your 15,000, 10 to 15,000 extra acre feet of storage. So thanks a lot. Sorry to haunt the meeting.
No, thank you, Larry.
We have two more speakers, Peter Waring and Marilyn Price. Go ahead, Mr. Waring.
Hi, my name is Peter Waring, and I'm a retired plumbing contractor and also a long-term member of the Board of Sustainable Marin. We've written you a letter encouraging you to really take more seriously conservation and recycling efforts. But as a plumbing contractor, I think a way to make this a reality here in Marin is to have more publicity around examples of the kinds of gray water and rainwater catchment systems that homeowners can install. And of course, for multifamily and commercial, even greater benefits. And to provide encouragement and incentives, maybe some free consultation for homeowners and other building owners, and maybe have a list of installers whom you vetted and you feel do a good job at this. That's it.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Marilyn Price, please.
Yes, well, thank you for all your work. I'm sorry I cannot follow all the technical stuff. It seems like a very, very elaborate project you're working on, and I really appreciate the time you're putting into it. I hope when we have that public workshop, that it can be very, you know, kind of more simplified to the people so that they can, you know, understand where we're coming from. And I'd like to kind of issue a challenge to our board and to Marin County. You know, when we bring up all this conservation, I, I just, knowing the way I live, I know there's a lot that all of us could do. And I would love to see Marin, being one of the wealthiest country, counties in the nation, become a real model and showcase for what a county can do using as much conservation, you know, changing behavior, regulations, if need be, that, that we really shine in that and, and lead the way as California has led in other things, but that we do that here in Marin County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. I do not have any further speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Terry. Ben, how about, what, where did we, where would you see things going from here? Maybe you can update us on, on what, what is in store for further work for our consultants and, but your ideas are.
Yeah, thank you, President Schmidt. I, I'd first want to note, just kind of as a baseline, really very good thoughtful comments coming from the board and the public. And of course, the team has been busy jotting them all down and will be integrating them and thinking about how to bring back, you know, capturing largely the themes that have been addressed. There is one that was repeated quite a bit, just to touch on because it provides an opportunity, so storage. And again, this is just an example. It could apply to many other of the projects or activities. But assuming storage is in the roadmap that the board will ultimately select and direct staff to implement, the next step in regards to storage is, would really be to answer many, if not really all, of the questions that have come up around that. And including looking at slide gates, feasibility, and those are largely driven by the specifics of the design of the existing dam and spillway. In addition to looking very granularly at the feasibility of dam expansions, not all dams are expandable, again, based on design and structural limitations, and really diving into those, having parallel discussions with the water board and other resource agencies, looking at the full spectrum of costs, including land purchases, looking at ways to mitigate potential inundations through shoulder dams on certain concepts. So just a lot more work in, and I understand some of the questions. Well, we just say, well, we'll do more work, but it is going to be required in most of these activities, and that's a good example. Specifically, I think tonight, for example, there was some discussion on thinking about winnowing down the options. And one of the board members suggested, out of the gate, perhaps Intertie. And I would think if the board, if it made sense to the board, that could be a good direction tonight, as I look at the Intertie to San Francisco, minimal water. And we all know what it would take. I think, we don't know, but we can surmise what it would take to put a pipe on the Golden Gate Bridge for a small amount of water and all the complexities there. And then the East Bay, we can go into the challenges and uncertainties that we've been talking about with that. So were we to do that tonight, it does help the next step in that we've kind of winnowed it down, and that would allow us to really focus on, you know, D-SAL, local storage, Sonoma, and various combinations, in addition to purple pipe, and of course, conservation and other things. So I would offer, if we want to continue the discussion tonight a bit, that we may want to think about that. And lastly, just briefly touching on conservation, if I could, that, just a couple of points. One, I do think, I mean, we've heard the comments, and it is important to show again, but it is such an important point, the breakdown of how we get to the conservation numbers. And also to remind the public that the numbers of conservation in this plan is a relatively small subset of our conservation plans going forward. It was the amount of water that we felt we could reasonably project in a planning effort like this, the board and the public's going to be seeing as we're updating our master plan, really as we talk, and we'll be bringing it to board committees and the board to update all the rich activities, really cutting-edge, that we plan to be looking at in regards to conservation. And then, as you saw this roadmap, were we super successful and we validated some of these cutting-edge concepts with conservation? It does allow us to adaptively manage going forward. So I, I don't, meaning maybe some of these large supply efforts don't proceed because conservation, we were able to get the return that we had just hoped for, but we didn't really have evidence today that we would necessarily get there. I don't want to sidetrack the discussion, but I did want to talk about those points. But President Schmidt, if it makes sense to you to loop back and think about, for example, Intertie perhaps not being part of the next discussion. I'm, I'm talking when I say Intertie, not the Sonoma. I'm talking about the East Bay and San Francisco. I think that would be beneficial to the effort, right? Just as we do scope, we put more effort. I think that would be beneficial to the effort, right? Just as we do scope, we put more effort on what's remaining. In line with much of the questions tonight.
Okay, well, I think, you know, thank you again. I mean, it shouldn't go without saying, I know that there's an incredible amount of work that Armin and your team have. Have done in conjunction with with our own staff. And so there's a lot of. A lot of time and effort and appreciation for what's been done so far. And I think that in our final time we have here. It would be good to get some comments from the board about about next step and directions because I think we've got a lot, still some work to do, obviously. The proposal seems to be out there about about taking. Further work on the inner tie off the table so that the Jacobs can narrow. Their focus and be more efficient on the things that are carrying forward. Is that? Is there support from the other board members to that? Any members that feel it should remain as a as an item that we continue to explore? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, my team, maybe I can start. As much as possible, I would like our decisions to be based on analyses. And right now, the analyses with respect to enter ties, what was presented to us. Does not put red flags next to them. So. Why would we be taking those off versus another option if we're going strictly based on what was presented to us? If we, if we really see, and that was my question regarding the S, you know, the San Francisco PUC connection. It seems to be falling out at about the same place as everything else, which as Ben said. Is 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 not maybe. So clear, but. Before we go ahead and start picking and choosing, I would really like the analyses presented to us to give us some guidelines for which to work with. So I would say there's two steps. There's one, let's refine that analysis so that if Ben and others really do have concerns about the enter ties. It should, it's there and our decisions are defensible.
I think that for myself, the only reason why I I'm compelled to take it off the table is because the analysis to date showed that it. That it in and of itself was not sufficient to hit our our goal. Of being resilient against the four year extreme drought, the scenario that we are planning against. And so it would require other actions in addition to it, which which made me feel like it is of itself. Not sufficient and it's a very substantial. It's not, it's not the kind of thing that I see us being able to do a little bit of. If we do any inner tie, it is a pipeline. And a lot of infrastructure, there's not a, I don't, I don't, and maybe the, Armin, you could speak to this. It doesn't seem like a thing we can do a little bit of. If we're going down an inner type pathway, there's a very substantial all or nothing commitment, but. And it's for that reason that it seemed to me like a reasonable idea to take that off the table at this point in time.
Yeah, if I could just Director Kush's comments specifically. I don't disagree. I think. One thing that's missing and just talking about it probably isn't understandably the documentation. In the analysis you're looking for to support the decision in terms of kind of risks and uncertainty. And that wasn't really clear in terms of. Tonight, I mean, we were looking at it a different way, but I do hear you and appreciate that point. I do think San Francisco really is a bit of a throwaway, but the East Bay enter tie. Has more complex challenges and risks, as we all know, it doesn't end at the inner tie, right? Then it gets into the water trades in the uncertainty of the markets and the competition of the markets. And will water even be available in dry years and that sort of stuff? But that should be. Perhaps presented in a way that's clear and to support the decision making. So we could go either way.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, Ben, you're certainly presenting additional facets or nuances of these options. That don't jump out in the analysis. So that to me then, do we have similar issues related to the other options? That are also not being presented that would, if we saw those, maybe, you know, change how we're perceiving this. I just think the process should be as systematic as possible. So maybe the first step is refining some of the qualitative. Elements of that analysis so that issues in, you know, that may also come back to storage, Monty, you know, if, 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 you know. Storage also has significant challenges, as you've suggested, maybe that should also be reflected a little bit more. You know, visibly i- in the qualitative analysis.
Well, I think it's setting the goals, right? So we had, so I am super psyched to see that you guys put out. Two, five, 10 year goals. I'd love to see us adopt those and map those to your different portfolios and all the different circles that you have. How can we? Achieve those goals? We finally have them. Let's codify them and let's go see if we can go get them. So that those targets to me are number one. And then I think we'll be able to take some important things off. I mean, from what you showed today, it sure looked like the inner ties about the least interesting example. But I agree, Ron G, we're not, we're not quite there yet and there are going to be other, other scenarios that we can take off. The table soon, whether it's certain local storage supply options or some more expensive ones that came out clear. So I think we're getting there. Let's get the targets clear and then let's dig in real deep and start taking things off. I'd say let's get a timeline around it in the next couple of weeks. I want to reiterate something that that several of our constituents said. And that is the importance of investing in conservation as a critical part of this. I'd love to see very clear articulation of how much use and demand we have in these scenarios. Historically, I've seen a reduction in use through conservation to be extraordinarily conservative. I think we can do better. And having those scenarios mapped out into the impact of investment in supply and infrastructure and storage would be important. So let's fine tune our analysis around conservation and the options and how we can invest. As rigorously as we're doing the rest of this.
I agree completely with Ron G. I think it's too early to take elements off of the table. I think we're still and should be in a listening mode, not a talking mode. I think we need more information. Before I could support those goals, I need to see a little more of the data behind how. Jacobs achieve those goals or what they're based on. I think we should ask Armin what he thinks. I mean, is, is the number of alternatives stifling your forward progress? And if it's not. Then I think we leave them in until we get a little further down the road. I see this very much as a value engineering approach. And one of the key factors in value engineering is never criticizing the alternatives. Until it comes to the criticizing stage. When the data is all on the table. I think we've made great progress tonight. I'm very happy with where we are. I think it's a real intellectual challenge to assess these level of alternatives. I think that rather than worrying about competing in the water market. If we were going to go forward with an inner tie across the San Rafael Bridge. I think it would be absolutely essential to purchase the water rights by buying them, buying land. Not, not just depending on getting some farmer's water he doesn't want to use. You buy the farm. And get the water resource that comes with the farm at whatever cost that is. So that you don't have any risk there. It's all secured and when you need it, it's there. Hi, I have a question too, Armin. This has been bugging me a little bit. Many of these alternatives will not require use. Every year. How do we wait the cost? If it has to sit for three years unused? And how do you impact that on the dollar per acre foot cost? I've been thinking about it a lot and I haven't achieved an equation yet that gets to that number. I mean, I have ideas about how to do it. But I'd like to know if you've given any thought to that because, you know, the dollar per acre foot numbers are pretty big. And as Ron G and I were talking yesterday. An easy analysis or analogy is to envision gasoline at nine dollars a gallon with a guaranteed supply. That you can go to anytime you need it. And then you have your regular gasoline, which is say five dollars a gallon, but it's open market. And that would be the five dollar gallon would be equivalent to our reservoir supplies. The nine dollar gallon would be equivalent to something that's more exotic or farther reaching, had a much higher cost. And then the question is, you know, everybody's in the same goal. You want the net to be the lowest cost per acre foot. Possible. So it drives you back to your local supply as being the base. And then what you need to add, you you pay the nine dollars a foot, nine dollars an acre foot when you need it. Nine dollars a gallon equivalent. So the idea is, you know, you go to the more expensive one when you need to, but you don't go to it routinely. And then how do you integrate that into its dollar per acre foot? If you got a thought on that?
Yeah, two, maybe two responses. First, Director Russell, in terms of like moving forward. I think the team has been working pretty. Pretty hard within the data and have some ideas on, on recommendations or a couple of recommendations and. If the board would like us to, it'd be, I think it would be good if we came back with. Based on our analysis and defensibility, a couple of recommendations for the board to consider. Keeping all of the options on the table, but, but describing how we ended up with a couple of recommendations. That, that would be kind of our desired pathway, but obviously I want to hear the feedback from the board. And then in terms of the, the supply that's not needed every year, yet you're, you potentially have to pay for it every year. I think that applies for a number of the options, so even, even the Sonoma water ones where you. You're going to have to make a risk based decision of buy water before you understand you're in a drought and. And many of the years, we won't be in drought and you'll lose, you'll lose that supplier or you'll pay for supply that you didn't absolutely need. So we are in the process of looking at essentially kind of how much spilled or lost supply. Would be, would occur under various scenarios. And trying to build that into then like a total cost, an actual cost of that supply based on the risk operation.
Do you think that's a stochastic evaluation that you can make?
I, I think we can, for Sonoma ones, we, I think we can because we kind of know the number of years in which we would not need the supply. Did I, oh, sorry. Zoom started updating on me, apologize. I think for, for some of the options, we can, for some. There will be, how much, how much do you need to continue to operate that supply in order to have it during the dry year? So what is your? Kind of your, your base mode operation versus your flexible operation? And we have some ideas around that as well, but. But we've not fully done that, that analysis that you've been. Discussing here.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things that, one of the comments we heard from, well, several folks. Who commented raised the, a desire to see a greater level of detail on. On some of the conservation and maybe you termed it, Armin, the no regrets. Elements that are embedded in many of the portfolios. I think that because those have been highlighted as being sort of foundational. That it would be good to have greater detail on them just so that. Because they're foundational to so many of the portfolios, it'd be good to have strong clarity about the assumptions. And the yields embedded in there and that some of that is, is related to the conservation comments. You know, one of the things that a portfolio that, that I'm of, of elements that I would like to see is something that. That does look at. How we can achieve and I do like Director Smith's suggestion that we do. That we apply those targets of, of our two, five and twenty five hundred and five thousand and ten thousand acre feet. As, as objectives, just as a way of at least. Having something to measure, something, everything against consistently, but something that doesn't, that. That relies on the things that we control. And this is where looking at. At the, the inner ties between our own system. With the no regrets scenarios, looking at making an assumption that, that raising our own spillway gates won't trigger a water. A water, new water right. I think being able to see what, what we could achieve of our goal using. The least risky, the most feasible elements that we have been investigating. Because I think that might help us to see a different view of the things that we most control. And that might have a substantial amount of, of impact on what we can actually achieve in the near term.
Yeah, I think the thinking has been that many of those low regrets are those, those types of actions Director Schmidt just mentioned. And we do, there is one criteria that was not on that scorecard, which we were. Not holding out, but we're going to utilize for, towards the recommendation, which is the jurisdictional piece that we, if you recall, we had. The jurisdictional rating that kind of suggested which ones were more within your control versus. Where did you have lots of regulatory or partnership hurdles to move forward with? And we wanted to utilize that in helping to inform, inform some future recommendation.
Okay, Ben, is there, or Armin, is there any update on when we will see the report? I think that there's a lot of desire to see the greater detail and I know that, that some of the board members, the board members have seen a draft. That, that is still missing a number of sections.
Yeah, I expect we'll be posting to the public and of course providing the board an updated version. Sometime next week. It still will have some sections awaiting the final. You can't have a final report until you kind of lay out the ultimate path. So. But that will largely be some of what we talked about tonight, I believe. But outside of that, is that? Fair, Armin, timing? I mean, I, I think it's probably close. I mean, it would still be, I think, posted as a draft. We wouldn't yet say, you know, we want a final polish first. But is that in the ballpark?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's right, Ben. The sections that are gaps right now, Director Schmidt, are, are the portfolios and the recommendations, which is what the conversation we're having. So we didn't want to, want to write that before doing the analysis and having this discussion. So. Think the sections that are, are complete and not ongoing can be written up and, yeah, a draft could be out next week, Ben.
I think it's imperative, Armin, that you incorporate some tables like the ones in the slides tonight. That allow an easier look at all the alternatives than to struggle through pages and pages and pages of text. You know, I, I do this all the time and I was juggling to keep in my mind everything straight. Especially the cost of alternatives. So those kind of tables I found that you had in the presentation, I thought were very good. I think we need something like that, just to make life easier. It could go, Ben, in the executive summary, but I think it probably belongs in the, in the text. At least a summary or something like that to be added to the text so that it's easier to look at the. Scope of the alternatives collectively, as opposed to trying to remember each of them as you read through.
Armin, I challenge you to put all the alternatives on one page.
Oh, careful, Jed. We might get those little things where you get so small, you can't even read it, you know?
Do it.
Yeah, I mean. We've done fact sheets like that, that are essentially front and back of the whole project on, on two pages.
Sure, sure.
Armin, I wasn't sure if you were asking, if you had posed the question of the, regarding recommendations and the degree to which. You know, recommendations should be emphasized in the final report. You know, recommendations should be emphasized in the final report. I for one would certainly appreciate that. And and particularly if you can draw lines between, you know, the analysis that has, that underpins those recommendations. The data qualitative and quantitative that 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 promotes some recommendations.
I think the other thing that's a little tricky, Armin, is how much portfolio effort you put into this. You know, like it it isn't necessary for one of the alternatives to solve the problem. It's necessary for all the alternatives to solve the problem or all the ones that we're going to use. So that part even gets it more complicated, you know, like how much do you uh count on A or B or C? It it's a little tricky. But that's why you get paid the big bucks and we hired you.
But I think the, we would like to kind of move forward with, with rec- presenting recommendations. One or more to the, to the board. I think that's, we wanted to have this conversation and 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 get some feedback. And kind of ensure that we're on the right path, but I think that would be our, our chosen direction. And and Director Kush, I think that to defend, you know, to give the rationale of how we arrived at that recommendation. I think would be useful. So I guess that's kind of where we're at today and wanted to get some feedback on, on that direction. Do you want, how, kind of how affirmative do we move forward with it?
One more question, Armin, is, do you see any issues with Sonoma County in general?
Well, I can't speak for the county, but um, like for the water agency, I think they're.
That's what I meant, the water agency, not the, it's normal water, not the county.
Now, we we've not had detailed conversations about that with them, but I think, you know, to the extent that there's. Greater flexibility that's being utilizing their system, they they're, they'd be in favor of. Um, I think to the extent that there's partnership opportunities with them, I, my sense is they'd be in favor of as well. And I I think the, the other parts that are very Marin focused are, I don't think there's an opinion from, from my conversations with them. They're, whatever Marin chooses to do, but I I think on the, on the Marin, on the Sonoma Aquadex side, I think they're. They'd be keen to look at partnership opportunities.
What is the status of the Sonoma County Water Report similar to ours?
Uh, they have a resiliency study um that's looked at, looked at drought last year, so it kind of focused on drought. It's um, it's now focusing on seismic risk, so that's the, the next aspect. And then we'll, they'll be looking at um wildfire and power risk following that. So that, that won't, that won't, that report won't be completed until the end of this year, end of twenty three.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I think with that, it's been a extremely informative night and a lot of effort. Thank you again, Armin and your team and our own staff and the public who's taken the time to show up. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you.